I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds, and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to September 30th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones and if the meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in the white folder, if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can assist you with that. Routine business, item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Have a motion and a second on the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two, approve the county commission minutes of September 23rd, 2014.
Move the minutes, second.
Have a motion and a second, any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $655,660.59.
Pay the bills, second the bills.
Motion a second, no comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval, second.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no applications for abatement today. The next item is notice and requests. A notice from the Dakota Access LLC Energy Transfer Company of their schedule of public open houses on plans to construct an oil pipeline through South Dakota, including Minnehaha County. The Minnehaha County open house is from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM Thursday, October 9th at the Morningside Community Center, 2400 South Bonson Avenue in Sioux Falls.
Mr. McFarland.
Commissioners, I just give you a little FYI on this one. I did make contact with the pipeline company yesterday and if you take a look at the map, that's part of the open house that shows where the location of the proposed pipeline is. Much of it is through western Minnehaha County. And I simply suggested to the pipeline officials that perhaps they would be more effective in their open house and outreach if they conducted it in one of our smaller communities where the pipeline was actually going to go, such as Hartford, Humboldt, or Colton. And that it really didn't make a lot of sense to have this thing in the east side of Sioux Falls. And that so whether or not they change that hearing date, I don't know, but we did make that suggestion yesterday and I felt that you needed to know that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien, John Pecus.
Thank you Cindy, this is on DPNO 51086 in the amount of $4,354.29. The auditor's office received a request for a compromise of lien on behalf of the current applicants. They are seeking to have their lien basically remitted without any further payment. They are seeking to purchase a home on October 28th of 2014. They apparently are attempting to purchase a home. The purchase price is $165,000 and they're required to pay at least $2,500 at the time of closing. There are public defender and poor relief services between 2003 and 2013 and the lien balance has grown steadily over time, but they have been making payments and partial payments to reduce the amount of that lien. There is a narrative that was provided to the commission and I believe it's actually in the binder as well regarding what their struggles were to make payments to try to get their financial condition a little bit more stabilized. However, with their injuries and illnesses, they actually ended up filing bankruptcy at the beginning of this year. They have of course continued to try to earn their education. They have varying degrees of education and they do have some employment. And so they are eligible now into South Dakota first time home buyers program to go ahead and purchase a home. They have grossly, excuse me, they have gross income of $45,619. They have assets of $2,584 consisting primarily of two older vehicles and they have personal property that they value at roughly $800. Their only liability currently is a vehicle loan for $1,600. Once again, they are appreciative of the, what they've received from the county and they've attempted to make these monthly payments. So they don't want to have to pay anymore, but with the pattern and practice that we've adopted here, I'll float a motion, I don't know if I'll get a second, for $2,177.15, which is approximately 50% of what is currently owed. I don't know if I'll get a second on that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
I have a motion and a second to approve for $2,177.15. Comments? Okay, all right, if you'd like to come forward. Identify yourself unless you're the petitioner, then you don't have to.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, George Hahn is my name. I'm a Realtor in Sioux Falls with Keller Williams Realty. I represent in my capacity as a buyer's agent, the petitioners, William and Shiloh Xline. Presently and for three years, they've lived in a house that is deplorable. It was owned by a party on whom 31 deplorable homes were foreclosed. We have sold off most of them. I cannot describe the conditions under which they've lived and still paid rent subsidized by the South Dakota or the Sioux Falls Housing Commission. Mold, leaks, equipment that doesn't work, HVAC is dysfunctional, yet they've slugged it out. John, I'll correct you, the bankruptcy was filed early in 2012, discharged in July of 2012. So the South Dakota housing program, which is an FHA loan, requires discharge for two years before one can apply. And quite simply, they've had the toughest luck you can have with accidents, injury, loss of work, getting a decent job before the insurance kicked in, in the case of Mr. Xline.
You don't have to use their-
And for the best part of 15 years, Shiloh worked as a waitress at the-
George, just a moment, Madam Chair, do you want to explain that?
Just that you don't have to use their names in public? You can just call applicants?
I understand. Thank you. I understand, I'm corrected. At a local restaurant, minimum wages and tips. Will and both, the mister and the missus both have decent jobs now with responsible companies whose paychecks never bounce. And that's a big deal for an awful lot of people who formally are on minimum wage, but whose education did not support the positions they seek. Tight job market, but most qualified applicants get the jobs. Basically, with a first time home buyer loan, you have to pay some closing costs and you've got to pay FHA insurance fees upfront. Those are generally built into the loan, but a lot of other costs and expenses aren't. The recitation which John makes is correct. But keep in mind, I was mortgage broker for 25 years, so let me cast some light on something. When the petition states $2,500 in closing costs, essentially here's how that's broken down, because it's not nearly that, they have to actually present to the closing table. There's $100 in earnest money. They prepay $475 for an appraisal. There is a tax credit paid by the seller, wherein the tax is currently $1,700. The net they have to show up with at the table is only $325. So it's not as though they have $2,500 they're going to bring to the table. They're going to defer every bill they can, every account possible, out of the next four paychecks coming in, so they can bring the money to the table and still pay the living costs and expenses. $4,950 of the total closing costs are being paid by the seller. A 3% concession on an FHA loan is very common. Typically, we see 70 or 80% of first time home buyer loans granted a concession by the seller. So it's not as though they're bringing $2,500 to the table they could otherwise do something with. They've got to have shodoos, so to speak, by not paying the bills for about four weeks because those are the rules inflicted on us by Dodd-Frank so-called lending reforms. So a compromise at the 50% level is customary. I've been here before, I've gotten some compromises at that or lower levels, even nothing. But in this case, we've got a relatively young couple, they're 40, 16 years marriage, never owned a home. To come up with that kind of money kills the deal. They simply do not have it. And the fact is, their assets are next to nothing. I'd hate to liquidate them for 100 bucks, quite frankly. Two older cars, some personal property, bring 100 bucks to the Wengler auction. They don't have any other sources of money other than their adequate health and their ability to work hard and from time to time do overtime. Now, one of the issues in the lending process, the income gross total includes bonuses and overtime for the mister. That is not guaranteed. The lending process does not assume it's guaranteed, but the petition was asked under oath to disclose the full total income based on the paychecks. So when you look at the take-home pay, which is how I budget a first time home buyer, their take-home pay allows about $75 to spare at the end of each month, assuming all bills are paid. So the idea that there is money now into the future whereby they could significantly reduce that, it just isn't there. If they've got to come up with about $2,100, there is no deal. This house needs to be, it is sold, it was sold about a month ago. The owner wants to put about $25,000 or $30,000 into it and put it back on the market so it can re-enter the pool for the Sioux Falls Housing Program. They're desperately short of houses and there's a four-year wait. This house needs to be back in that pool. But they also have to get out of there. She has asthma, the mold is just killing her, she'll make it another month, but spending most of the time outside of the home. The leaks are impossible, the furnace doesn't work, and when you're going to gut and refurb a house, it's very difficult for a new owner to come in and put a lot of money in. So I ask you to reconsider the amount that requesting based on these other facts that aren't necessarily on the face of what you see in your petition. And I've gotten to know this couple quite well over the last four months since I started working with them to get them out of there because our firm has a management company, our group within Keller Williams has a management entity, and we managed the property and did the necessary repairs to maintain their very minimal habitability. So please reconsider, we need to put somebody into ownership and out of tenancy and take a house that could be a decent house with $25,000 or $30,000 reinvested back into the property by its new owner. So I ask that you reconsider and I appreciate your time and energy toward this matter.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hahn?
Madam Chair, yeah, George, if I did misspeak, I apologize. The information we have from the auditor's office showed that the bankruptcy was filed, at least with the county, the date we have is the 16th of January 2014. And that's just what we have for the bankruptcy proceeding, it could have just been a lapse in our part getting it loaded. I don't dispute your statement at all, but that's what we have.
I reviewed it with Pacer.
Commissioner Kelly.
Is the buyer, or the owner of the house right now, that's Williams?
No, the owner of the house is Sehr, S-E-H-R.
Is that related, is that related to your firm?
No, 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 you're talking the owner of the home in which they are presently living?
Yeah, that's your-
No. Keeg Williams is the owner of the property, Williams Property Management. He is presently the owner of 206 North French.
And are they related to your firm?
No, in no way, shape, or form. We just sold them the property. In fact, one of them is another Realtor, but in the firm, that's beside the point.
Commissioner Pecus, I mean Barth, excuse me.
Thanks. Mr. Hahn, you know, this, the applicant here got a tax refund of, I think, $9,800 this year and didn't consider making an additional partial payment to us. They made a partial payment in January 4th of 2013. So I'm guessing that they probably got a nice tax earned income credit check last year and did not really think of us and now they're not thinking of us this year, but they want us to then support this plan of theirs.
Again, Commissioner Barth, knowing the couple as well as I do and knowing the certain situations with family, there were medical bills that still had to be paid, even those that had approved since the bankruptcy. A tragedy befell the family recently where they had to help. Second youngest son came down with diabetes, $900 a month for insulin, can't change his insurance for a month or two. Other tragedies have befallen them with respect to getting through months where there was no income to complete degrees as soon as possible. For the gentleman to get his certificate from the South Dakota, or from the vocational technical school, he had to take an intense course load. She got her fourth degrees actually from the same institution, but she was able to advance on her first job to an insurance payment specialist with Sanford. So they took time off from work to complete these degrees, utilizing those funds to boost themselves up and in part to demonstrate to their children that you put your minds to the, your butts to the grindstone, you accomplish just about anything. And now because the kids are all beyond a certain age, those tax refunds are going to go way down. And of course, again, due to, we're friends with Dodd-Frank, private mortgage insurance is no longer deductible, they're trying to get, still trying, it should be in the grave, but they're still trying to get rid of the mortgage tax deduction and a lot of other things are no longer deductible. So they put their money toward family use, they didn't run out and buy any Cadillacs or crab leg meals, I know that very well. So again, you raise a valid point, which has been raised before in discussions such as this, but it all went for family purposes, not just theirs, but children. The biggest component of the county aid lien was for a daughter who had her identity stolen and was slandered on Facebook. That went sideways every which way and she needed a lawyer to defend herself. That's the bulk of what is owed there. Through no fault of hers, but through some malicious person, and this was when she was a minor, but parents had no choice but to incur a family debt so they could declare her name and get her out of the pokey. So it's not as though there were a lot of things they had a great deal of control over, but things happen and life goes on.
Additional questions for George? Commissioner Kelly?
If I read this correctly, they have for the last three years been receiving $700 a month subsistence on the housing from Sioux Falls Housing.
That is correct, yes, Dick.
And that'll go away when they buy this house?
That goes away completely. Plus, they paid another $283, which was their share based on their income. That is reviewed annually, but in anticipation of the discharge and anticipation of completing the degrees more rapidly, they went all the way to work their rears off completing the educations because these jobs were open and available. And usually at an institution like Sanford, you might spend three, four years working your way up the ladder. I do know that because I represent many medical professionals at Sanford, but she qualified through education and a little good luck.
Additional questions? Commissioner Barth?
Isn't their monthly payment at this new location going to be over $2,000 a month?
Oh, no, 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 it's $1,175, including taxes, insurance, the private mortgage insurance, and property insurance.
$160,000?
4% fixed for 30 years. Interest rates are very, very low and we have a very good price on this house. Houses are short, they've gone up 14% since the beginning of last year. We have fully recovered from the OA crash by 10% on top of that. But we're short of housing for lots of reasons, I won't give you an economics dissertation. I could, but I won't. And we have a very good price in this because the elderly woman selling it who's well into her 80s had to go to an assisted living that has cost in her children $4,000 a month. So we probably got this home for $15,000 less than it might have brought at an optimal sale. And that's why we don't want to lose the opportunity. And after the Federal Reserve Board meets next week, they're going to raise the rates and that 4% is going to go away. Thank you again, Dodd-Frank. That's the root cause of every problem that plagues our real estate industry. So the timing is right, the stars and the moon are aligned for things to happen at this point, a little bit of its good happenstance, some of its coincidental, and they deserve a good coincidence for a change.
Any other questions or comments? I'm not going to support the motion. Commissioner Benega?
Excuse me, George, I, when I look through the history of what we've supported over the last nine years, there's a number of mostly poor relief support, but there's also nine years of public defender support. Is that all related to identity theft?
That is all related to the young girl who at a teen, early teenage point in time went on Facebook, somebody besmirched her good name and it involved needing an attorney. It's a tragic situation, what can happen when your identity is stolen. I just about lost my marbles when somebody hacked into my bank account in February. Nearly had a heart attack, never had anything like that happen, but to a teenage girl, 14 years old or so, to have her identity stolen and slander smeared all over, such that it eventually involved the need for a county aid attorney, I can't imagine what that is like. I can say that that young lady, however, has a very good job at a large institution with a decent rate of pay and has recovered completely from that instance. But that is where the bulk of the money went. You're quite correct.
Seems very difficult to be at this for nine years, but-
Well, between minimum wage jobs, loss thereof, cars with problems, gosh, I can see how that can happen. In real estate, we see a lot of tragic situations where things fall apart because people get into something without knowing what's going on in business, professionally, legally, and don't understand the implications those have on your credit or your mortgage capabilities. But I've been at this 31 years, I was a licensed mortgage broker for a quarter of a century, so I've seen it all.
Christian, you want to comment on some of these charges that we have listed?
The charges I have listed on the sheet, and I believe this is part of your packet as well-
Yes.
Started in 2004 in February. There was another one in 2004, December, 2006 in November, 2007 in June, 2007 in August, 2007 in October, 2009 in October, 2011 in February, and 2012 in December. Did the applicants tell you that this is all related to a identity theft?
The teenage girl's necessity of getting a county aid lawyer was in fact directly related to the identity theft and issues relating to that. Bad grammar, but you know where I'm going. In '07, '08, he got a new job, broken ankle, no insurance, out of work for months and months and months. She caught double pneumonia, asthma made it even worse, she wasn't able to work for months and months. So to keep the lights on and keep a roof over their head and a little bit of gasoline in the tank, they relied on the county. And I think in the letter which she wrote, she clearly stated that without the county's help, they wouldn't have made it through. But I can, I can well envision high five figures of medical bills from that kind of a situation.
And I understand about the poor, poor relief, you know, aid that was given, I'm talking just specifically about legal help and-
Yeah, it was a lot.
I understand, but just to clarify, did they tell you that this was only related to their minor daughter, all those incidents?
This was related specifically to the minor daughter.
From 2004 to 2012?
Yeah, she's 30 years old now. 28 years old now.
Wow.
No, no, I got that wrong, but that's beside the point. She was a teenager at the time.
Okay. And there may be some associated with some juvenile court proceedings, but the notations in the county records that I have say there were also some adult court proceedings for the applicants themselves, and I don't know if they've told you that or-
There was something at one point, I'm not privy to what it was. It was relatively minor, as I understand it, I didn't pry any further.
And I just want to clarify that-
And that's a fair assumption, Christian.
-about the breadth of the time period, and I don't know specifically what the juvenile court things were that they're probably referencing to in the identity theft issue.
Well, the family got wrought up in it, believe me. When you've got a teenage girl who's impressionable, has had all that kind of garbage flung at them, I don't know how I would have handled something like that when I was a teenager. I can't imagine that. All I know is that Dangier had a heart attack when they tried to attack my bank account for 300 bucks in January. Didn't succeed, but they sure tried.
Additional comments from the commission? I have a motion on the table for compromise for $2,177.15.
Madam Chair, I may make one more comment.
Commissioner Barth?
Just that, George, we're representing, you know, 170,000 people who in effect have loaned these folks these thousands of dollars. And, you know, I think to myself, would I loan them the money? And, you know, the county did. Would I forgive it if I had loaned it to them? I don't think I would, and so I'm afraid I'm going to be voting against this.
Well, over $1,000 has been paid back and a payment fairly recently.
I show it at 960, but yes.
Isn't it 960? Okay. When I talked to Robert on Thursday, he had commented there was a more recent payment.
Very well maybe, but anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
What was submitted was not the most up-to-date printout. That was probably three months old, four months old. But there have been other compromises for more money, even which I have represented that worked out very well. One of them didn't. Others have proven successful, but we have the opportunity to get somebody out of rental, into ownership, into a tax-paying status, and put a property back into the housing portfolio of Sioux Falls Housing. Now, one thing about Sioux Falls Housing, you need to remember, they pay taxes, they're not, they're not the city, they're not community development, which is non-taxable. I even made a conscious effort to work with the new owner to make sure all of these went back into the Sioux Falls Redevelopment and Housing Commission stock of inventory which pays taxes.
Okay, George, we're going to call it and come back to the commission. Cindy looked up to see if there were any more further payments other than what we have on the board, so-
Might have been 100 bucks more.
The last one was in 2013, January 2013.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the commission and to-
Roll call vote.
A roll call vote, and this is for a motion of compromise for $2,177.15. Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Three yes, two no. Motion carries. Motion carries to compromise for $2,177.15, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission on a public comment? This is the time to do it, anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go forward.
Regular business, item one is to issue a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Minnehaha County. Amy Carter.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning, how are you? Again, we come every October because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'm here representing the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council. And so the proclamation I have here that I will go ahead and read, "Whereas four million women are victims of severe assault by their intimate partners annually in the United States, and nearly one in four women are likely to be abused by a partner in her lifetime; and whereas children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average; and whereas in 2013, 1,239 domestic assault cases and 242 protection order violation cases were investigated by the Sioux Falls Police Department and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office; and whereas in 2012, 46% of the murders in South Dakota were a result of domestic violence; and whereas a dedicated group of citizens have been fighting domestic violence together through the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council for 32 years; and whereas wearing a purple ribbon during the month of October and attending Take Back the Night Dinner program in Candlelight March on October 7th, 2014, at the Old Courthouse Museum at 6:00 PM will demonstrate support for the victims of domestic violence; and whereas the voices of victims offer us important insight into the personal pain and loss that victims endure and are voices that deserve our attention, respect, and support. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to become actively involved to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole."
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for all your organization does to protect women in our community.
Thank you. And I'll just extend that invitation to Take Back the Night, which is next- And I'll just extend that invitation to Take Back the Night, which is next Tuesday, actually, a week from today, at the Old Courthouse Museum, and we look forward to a great event, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I don't normally read the cartoons, but today, and I think it was Pogo, there was something about the one guy said they're going to have to do an education program on, basically, abuse. And the other guy says, "Any country that has to educate their citizens not to beat up women is already in big trouble." Although it's kind of pointed to today.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do we need a motion? I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second to issue the proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 is an informational briefing on a request for conduit bond financing by Minnehaha County for construction of Frayland Science Complex at Augustana College. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office here. And I want to, to be clear, we're not looking for any action today, we're just going to present some information. This is informational and hope that you will consider it favorably. It's like Cindy said there, today I'm going to present Ms. Sherri Roder of Novellis Law and Mr. Tom Meyer. He's the Vice President of Finance and Administration for Augustana College. They're here today to tell us of an exciting new project and how Minnehaha County could assist with their financing for the new Frayland Science Complex at the Augustana College campus. So we're just asking that you'd reconsider the bonding capacity that the county has and lend that to Augustana College for a non-bank qualified pass-through bond issue for fiscal year 2014. All three of us will be available for questions after the presentation, so I'd like to give you Sherri Roder this time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I believe in the packet there was a letter kind of outlining the bond process, but I thought I would go ahead and kind of reiterate what was in that package. Augustana College needs to borrow funds to finance the construction of the project, and Tom Meyer is going to give a little bit of information about the project. And in order to do so, to reduce the borrowing costs, they would like to borrow on a tax-exempt bond basis. In order for the bonds to be tax-exempt, they need to be issued by a governmental entity that passes through to Augustana College. Augustana College would remain fully responsible for repaying the bonds, the county is not responsible for repayment of the bonds, they're just lending their governmental entity's status to facilitate the project and lower the financing costs. Tom, did you want to speak a little bit about the project?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Tom Meyer, Vice President of Finance and Administration with Augustana College. We're excited about the project. We have generated a lot of enthusiasm with our alumni and our current student body. We've raised the pledges, we have the funding, but it's, the pledges are over a longer period of time. Our donors have tremendous confidence in the college and the project. Our current science facility is almost 50-years-old. It was built in 1966. At that time, it was state-of-the-art. We've needed to improve it for a number of years, and we finally have the financial support and pledges. And again, those pledges are over a longer period of time. We're excited to start the project and are appreciative of the financing that we have designed and want to put in place to build the project. The project would be a 41,000-square-foot addition to the current science building, as well as renovating the 82,000-square-feet of existing space. So the addition would go up first, that would provide the swing space, and then we would renovate the two wings of the existing building. The project would take about 24 months. The new science complex would be named after a former professor at Augustana College, Dr. Sven Frayland. He was biology professor when the existing building was built and was a leader in our natural science division. The project totals about $35 million. Three-fourths of that would go towards the construction of the building, the rest of it is for furniture, equipment, and other things that would be included in the project. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Meyer. I'm wondering how much of the bonding you would want from the county.
You know, we're looking at $18 million to finance this. This is non-bank qualified, so it doesn't use up any of that capacity, and as Sherri said, it's really a conduit financing that allows us to qualify for tax-exempt financing as a nonprofit.
Commissioner Barth?
Sherri, you've done this before, and I know it's been a while since we've seen you, but what are the responsibilities for the county on this? Basically, we don't have to worry about the debt. What about paperwork and, you know, employee time?
There would be some initial employee time as far as putting together the bond documents, but I don't anticipate, based upon my past experiences, that it takes a lot of time. I've never gotten the impression that it does.
Any other questions? I'm wondering what year you were planning on taking this money out?
It would be in 2014, this year.
That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
I guess I'd ask to ask Auditor Bob if... Auditor Litz, were you here when we did one of these last time, and do you recall any issues?
No, I was not. 2008, Sue was the auditor, but one of the issues that came out of that thing was she held back $200,000 worth of bonding capabilities for a refunding that she had. But, you know, I, of course, have proposed, I don't want to mix things, but I've proposed a refunding to save the county money, and that too will probably be non-bank qualified, so we don't need to reserve back any of that money, or the capacity that we have.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks.
I have one more question for Bob, and that would be if we let them use their $18 million, do we have anything left for us if we do any building projects next year? Because there are a couple on the board.
Absolutely. You would, when you do a non-bank qualified pass-through, generally that's worth about 1.5 basis points. So we would keep that bank qualification apart, so our rates would be more favorable by 1.5 basis points. And so we're not going to use that on this year, we're not going to use that on the refunding that I would propose either. And so your capacity for bonding in 2015 and 2014 is still there for any amounts that you care to do.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Bob, as I understand, the difference between bank-qualified and non-bank is that there's a limit, like $10 million or something, is that-
$10 million would be the limit that we could put forward for them for bank-qualified, but this is a non-bank-qualified.
So the entire $34 million is treated?
As, yes, non-bank-qualified, yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bennika?
I don't really have a question, I'd just make a comment. There's really very little responsibility for the county, other than the fact that we're endorsing the project, basically, and our chances of being responsible for any financial piece of this is less than remote. And the fact that they've already raised almost half of the, I think, amount that they need to build the facility, it's just helping the community with, frankly, keeping people here and hopefully buying houses and making property tax payments, so we can keep up with the growth of county government. So I would support this at some point when we do vote on it.
Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I just want to point out that Commissioner Barth indicated, you know, we've seen Ms. Roder here, it's good to see you again. She's good bond counsel, and we have a history of looking at these types of projects, just off the top of my head, I think we were involved in doing a similar transaction with Bethany Lutheran. I think also Sioux Falls Catholic Schools with the Performing Arts Center, also Southeast Area of O-Tech. And I think it's interesting that, you know, at one point in time, we actually had Hugh Grogan, our old Human Services Director, do a determination to make sure education was one of the areas that we could really be involved in as a commission, and the answer came back unequivocally, yes. Augustana has been a wonderful partner, they've been great in the community, we all know that, and so I'm pretty excited about this.
Any other questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add that as far as the county's involvement for work from personnel, it'd be a little bit from me and a little bit from Kirsten. Kirsten has been in this process since the beginnings.
All right. Seeing nothing else, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Item number 12 is a review and briefing on proposals received for county aid lien notification and collection services. Proposals were open September 25, 2014. Ken McFarland.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioners, as Cindy indicated, we did issue a request for proposals for firms that were interested in serving as the collector on certain county aid liens, and as part of that collection process, you know, we have a notification process as well to notify people that they have the lien and to make arrangements for payment. Our current contractors, with Howgie and Associates, and that contract has expired, and that's why we're taking a look at proposals. We did receive two proposals on our RFP. One was submitted by Howgie Associates, the current provider, and the other one was submitted by Credit Collections Bureau, also of Sioux Falls. At this juncture, what we would like to do is, with your blessing, is to assemble a review committee consisting of a representative from the commission office, and I would probably think myself would serve on that, a representative from Human Services, and at hand, a representative from the Auditor's Office, most likely the person in the office that deals directly with the county aid liens themselves, to review the proposals for scrutiny, follow up with any necessary phone calls to flesh out those proposals, and then to bring you a recommendation. Our hope is to have a new contract in place with whatever the recommended provider is before the first of the year. So again, this is just a briefing at this point to notify the public that we have, in fact, received those, and then again, with your blessing, we'll go ahead with that review committee and bring you a recommendation shortly.
Okay. Any questions for Ken? All right, thank you. Item number 13 is consider a motion to adopt the final FY 2015 Minnehaha County budget. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this is the final day by statute for you to consider and to adopt the final FY 2015 budget. As you remember, earlier this year, you adopted a provisional budget of $72,141,845. The budget we bring to you today for consideration of adoption is actually lower. It's at $71,909,901. We did provide you with the spreadsheet that shows some of the major changes to the budget that dropped that. Those two things that really helped bring that down were, number one, the, we had a request from the Air Guard and notification from the Air Guard that the amount of funds available to support the Air Guard budget has been reduced for now. And so as a result, the request was to remove the dollars associated with two vacant positions out at the Air Guard itself. We will maintain those two positions as recorded in the budget, but there will be no dollars attached to it. And if at such time, which is common, that we get an addendum to that agreement from Air Guard, we'll take the necessary option to supplement. But at this time, the request has been to reduce that. In addition, we had some changes in the levy for the debt service on the Jail Kitchen project, that was also a reduction as well. And so those things, combined with our final run of payroll, to put everything as current as we could get it in payroll, led to the reduction from the provisional budget that you see here, and so it's at $71,909,901. And that, again, this budget is fueled by a 2.4% growth due to new construction, and it also includes a 1.42% increase in, or, excuse me, a 1.4% increase in the CPI adjustment. It also includes some minor increases in some non-property tax revenues, such as the bank franchise tax, and some vehicle registration fees, and we do have some accumulated cash that we're spending down in the highway fund for the highway budget. The budget includes one new position, which is a court records officer in the jail, and at hand, it is also includes implementation of the county's pay plan for full and part-time employees, along with normal step increases. Pretty much, this budget does keep things on par with 2014. There's very little new cash in there, or new positions for growth, but you are well aware of that. So at this juncture, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but we do have in there the spreadsheet that shows what all the adjustments were to individual budgets from provisional to the final, and then what some of those changes are, excuse me, what some of those changes are in the means of finance and where those happen. So there is a press release there, and that we will distribute today, and for anybody here in the audience that's interested.
Are there any questions for Ken? I think we all put in a lot of long hours in reviewing the budget again, along with department heads who come forward with their leanest budgets they can, and then after that, end up cutting more things. There were quite a few positions that were requested that were not able to be filled due to lack of funding of county government. So we move forward, and we pretty much stay the same as we were last year, even though the county continues to grow in population and need for services.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to adopt the final FY 2015 Minnehaha County budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the final fiscal year 2015 budget. Are there any other comments or questions? Commissioner Barth?
Can't hardly go by it without saying something. You're absolutely right, Madam Sherri. We have worked awfully hard on it, and I can say that, in effect, because of, as tight as we're keeping things, services to our county are ever so slightly reduced. And I would also say that, you know, to the citizens of our county, it's too bad that more of you didn't come and observe during our budget process and give us your input, because it's not just enough to throw peanuts from the gallery. You need to come down and be part of the process and impart whatever thoughtful considerations you might come up with. And I think we did a great job, and I only wish that we had more community participation.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 14 is Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Seeing none. Commissioner Barth?
I'm going to just show you here in a moment. I was out with our planning director, Scott, looking at some of our addressing signs in the rural area, which are deteriorating rapidly. They've only been up for, how many years, Ken? Three years? Anyway, I have a couple photographs I'd like to show you.
I have a comment, I mean, that's fine, but don't we have a new signing program that just went into effect, that the state is replacing all the signs in the county?
Oh, this is the, I'm sorry, the blue signs that are the address.
Oh, okay, okay.
Let me switch to the elbow. I'm not sure how it'll go here. Okay, this is a sign that we went out and looked at.
Can't see it at all now.
It's a little out of focus there. Zoom out. So the reverse side of that sign is this. The south-facing side is almost illegible. And I guess we've already started having complaints from the fire chiefs and the ambulance folks. Interestingly, and by the way, that's Scott in the background taking a picture of the other side. Here's one of our green signs that is at least 10-years-old, right in the same, the next post, and it's hanging out just fine. So there's something wrong with our blue signs that we put up at the cost of, Ken says $180,000, and we are currently charging homeowners for replacement of these signs when they go bad. And it's, I'm planning on talking to DJ about him, he'll be able to tell me more about the technologies that have- He'll be able to tell me more about the technologies that affect this type of thing. That's bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Are there any other comments? All right. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? One old business.
Commissioner, as you recall, last week, you had a resolution to vacate a private road in that, here in the cities of Sioux Falls, described as East White Tail Place. During the filing of that resolution, the Register of Deeds office determined that there was an error in the legal description. So what you have before you is the corrected resolution. It's under old business on your Dropbox and that on your computers. But it's the corrected resolution that we're asking that you adopt, and that it will also make the resolution last week null and void, but it will be this resolution that you will be filed with the Register of Deeds and become effective, and we'll have to rerun the publication dates on it.
Okay. So, Commissioner, or, excuse me, Bob Litz?
Ken is still on this one.
Okay. So Ken, what do we need, do we need to do this now as to take an action today to null and void? Okay, so I look for...
And to adopt the resolution that you have.
Yeah, just a motion to adopt the new resolution.
Okay. So I need a motion to declare resolution MC 1451 null and void and to adopt the current resolution.
That's my motion. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Litz?
Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. I just wanted you to know, and I didn't know whether to come under new or old business, because it seems to be both, but that's yesterday, we had people from ESNS come up here, and we did training on our new 850s downstairs. And we had a representative from the school, a representative from the city. We had two IT people in training, and my entire staff. We had two sessions down there. It went well, and I think that everybody has viewed these machines as favorable, and it looks like they're going to help speed up our elections. They're very easy to work with. A lot of the old 650s, some of those ideas morphed into the new ones there, but we're real pleased to have those machines down there. And if any of you want to come and see them, why don't just come tap me on the shoulder and we'll give you a look.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other old business? Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I'm just looking at our schedule of events. I do have an election event, I believe, tomorrow night. It's not on the schedule, but I think all of you were invited. And I want to make sure it was publicly noticed, but I don't see it on here. In case we all show up.
Yeah. We did see that. And I was unsure on that one when I saw it. I wasn't sure if this was a, quote, "private fundraising event" or not, and so I was a little...
It's not a fundraising event. I can tell you that, because I can't be present at any fundraising event pursuant to judicial charges.
So I was just a little unsure about how to handle that one. So that was my fault for you.
Do we have to give at least 24 hours notice?
Out of an abundance of caution, I would. Obviously, there's no intent or plan to discuss any county business. However, the way our laws have been construed...
We'll send out a correction.
Yeah, I think we should. I don't know if, you know, it's just a stop-and-go, meet candidate type thing.
It's just presence here.
Yep.
Potential presence, I should say.
Abundance of caution.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love that.
I have an executive session for personnel. Anything else on that list, Kirsten, other than personnel?
No. No, I don't believe so today.
Can I have a motion for executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second for executive session. A motion for adjournment.
You can go to him.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.